Oh, there we are.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna call to order this regular town council meeting at 6:02 PM on Thursday, November 20th. We'll do roll call first. Mike Peters?
Here.
Jackie Bryant?
Here.
Jason Rainey?
Here.
Ashley Cheney is here. Jacob Bowman?
Here.
And clerk treasurer Donna Moore?
Here.
Okay. President Jessica Jones is absent. At this time, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, with all creation, with God, and with all.
Do we need to open to the public?
Yep.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open to the public, open for public comment, so if you have any public comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and tell us your comment. No takers? Okay. We will close the public comment and move on to Resolution 2025-012, adopting the Trafalgar Town Seal.
Okay, I guess I will make this brief, but at least give it the recognition it deserves. So, behind you is a black cloth, and behind that black cloth is the new town seal for the town of Trafalgar. When I came on board, I met with residents and business owners and people from the community, historical members of the community, and I heard a common sound that Trafalgar did not have its own identity. So, over the course of a year, we have partnered with many individuals, many community members, to share their stories, read the books. Special thanks to Emily McKnight, who's here with Plasky Advertising, Jeremy Kidwell with Pop Prints, Todd Jones with Johns County Public Libraries, Trafalgar Branch, for helping found the Trafalgar area historical preservation project, where we were able to discover a lot of historical information about the town. I'd like to thank the Trafalgar Chamber of Commerce, and especially to Bud Walker and to John Lancaster, who were able to contribute the stories and the depth to what's behind you. If you would like to, it is taped on the wall, so if you would like to just grab it and pull down, hopefully the tape will let go. There's only a few pieces at the top and two in the middle.
Okay, sure. Ready? There she is.
So, what you'll see behind you is for the first time since 1816, that Trafalgar has actually had an identity. This will be registered with the state of Indiana as a registered town seal for the town of Trafalgar. And what this incorporates is a home that was built in the late 1800s. It was for the Charlie Paris family on their farm, and the bricks that make that building up were locally made by Imadé's father. So, there's a lot of history just in that building alone. That, after it was a home, it did become, it served as Trafalgar's town hall for a period of time, and then the land was purchased to build the now current Indian Creek Schools on. It's currently well taken care of by Indian Creek School Corporation. So, here it is. That's a building that we all know and love, that's on 252 and 135. We have the three radio towers at the back, that everyone knows that you're close to home when you see them. And then, residents here are very passionate about the old railroad that used to run through town that's no longer. So, we felt it was worth including, just as a peek in the corner, the old railway. So, this is a way to just recognize a historical landmark here, a nod to the past, and then I will absolutely kudos, and Emily, if you agree, I will absolutely kudos Jeremy Kidwell for contributing to our identifying slogan, if you will, preserving the past, growing with purpose. Because we know growth is upon us, but it will be responsible and intentional, but we will never forget our past. So, I feel like this is a great representation of where we are, who we've always been, and who will always be here in Trafalgar. So, I believe there's a motion, Jacob, to officially adopt this?
Resolution.
Okay.
With that, I assume you wish the town council to approve Resolution 2025-012, adopting town seal for the town.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-012 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jason and seconded by Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution 2025-012 is passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Works great.
Congratulations, and thank you to everyone who was involved in working on this project.
Good job, you guys.
We'll, we'll come back to you. We'll have, we'll have it at the end.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna review the October cash change. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? And the utility billing report is attached from November 20th. Any comments or questions on that? All right, we need to consent the town council meeting minutes from October 16th, 2025.
Anybody have any questions about this? Yes, for 16th. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 16th, 2025 as presented.
Jackie, second.
Okay, motion made by Jason and seconded by Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. And then we had a town council special meeting on October 30th, 2025?
I make a motion that we accept the town council's special meeting minutes from October 30th, 3025 as written.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Mike and seconded by Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. That'll be passed four to zero. Okay, we have our November dockets to approve. Donna, do you have anything that sticks out that you need to discuss with us?
No.
I make a motion that we accept the November docket report as written.
We need to go through each of those one by one, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, start with general for 265.
Mike, if you can make the motion with the amount.
I'm sorry, yeah?
You got, so we got three different ones, Mike. There's the docket, that's just the expenses. If you look at the next three, each of those is individual. We'll do it as the wastewater general and the water.
So, we do general first?
You can, yeah. If you open it up, it'll have the amount on the front. Bottom left of the paragraph here will show you. I'll get this one if you want.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So, I'll make a motion to approve the general fund for $265,927.18.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jason and seconded by Mike. All in favor, say aye.
So, if you click on the board.
Aye.
Water claims.
Yeah.
See it's a click on the blue tab. Bottom left of the paragraph, there you see the total. On the first page, I'm sorry. It's right here. It's different, so we use the top, so it.
Oh, there it goes. Okay, thanks. I make a motion that we approve APV water claims October 16th through November 19th in the amount of $46,112.16.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Mike and seconded by Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Approved four to zero. Then we have wastewater.
Make a motion to approve the wastewater claims docket, the amount of $72,837.67.
Is that Mike?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Jason and seconded by Mike. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved four to zero. And then we have a couple of claims not on the claims register. Is that you, Donna, or?
You can just read.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those are just two claims that came in today.
Okay.
And I had already ran the claims report.
Okay, so we need to, I'll make a motion to approve the element materials technology for water testing, $46.20. Is that to be paid out of the water fund?
Yes.
Okay, to be paid out of the water fund? Okay, motion made by Ashley and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved four to zero. And then we have a motion to pay UniFirst Town Hall, for the Town Hall mats, for $170.56.
And that would be out of general?
Out of the general fund?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ashley and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passed four to zero. And then we have the appropriation report through 11/19 of 2025.
Yeah.
All your categories and your balances.
Yeah.
What's that? It's just review, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just for review unless you have questions.
Any questions or comments on that, council?
No.
All right, we'll move right along to new business. We need to do the annual certification regarding nepotism policies. Everyone will sign one. Do we need to do anything else with that? Make sure you sign it before you leave, folks. Okay, and then we're going to review the 2026 town council meeting dates. Hold on, guys, I think I have a cruise.
I may make mention that as we drafted the planned commission meeting schedule for next year, we did take, we were aware of the school's spring break schedule, so I'm not sure where that's gonna fall in the council calendar.
Yeah.
But you may wanna take a moment just to review that date, because I know we had a conflict this year.
Well, that's what, fall break is my issue in October. Do you guys have anything planned for spring or fall break?
I will not be around in March.
Okay.
So, not for that week. I'll be going out of the country, 16th through the 22nd.
Okay.
Whatever, I mean, you gotta have three.
And I won't be here in October, so I don't know if we wanna move the meeting or just plan on.
And I think for the sake of these, you can just go ahead and approve these dates, and once we see what everybody's plans are, with enough time for notice, if you need to change those too, that would, it's gonna be easier than trying to do it now, and it's still not working.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 town council meeting dates.
Second.
Motion made by Ashley and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jackie, did you aye?
Aye.
If you want, if you agree with the motion.
Okay.
Okay, that'll, that's approved four to zero. All right, now we get to review the 2026 employee healthcare, dental, and vision renewal. We have any discussion on this? Any questions or comments?
How much did the rate go?
Nine point six for medical, three point two for dental.
There's no vision increase, no more accidental death.
There's nothing we need to do, right? It's just for us to review?
I'd make a.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve.
Renew the policies.
Okay. Do you guys have anything before we move on to, okay?
No, for me.
Okay. We'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 employee healthcare, dental, and vision renewal.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ashley and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approved four to zero. Okay, the old business, so the memorandum of understanding of development, so that's what we're still working on, right?
You skipped one.
Oh.
One, at least on mine, it says adoption of other business matters.
Oh.
Is there anything else?
Adoption of other business matters, sorry.
I don't have anything. I just didn't want to.
Does anybody have anything? Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, sorry.
Okay. So, now onto old business, so the memorandum of understanding of the development and operation of the Trafalgar communities that are in amphitheater. We're gonna table that, leave it on the agenda?
Leave it on the agenda, still take a look at it. It's like a 20-page document.
Twenty?
I don't.
You being dramatic?
It's nine.
Nine? You weren't being a little dramatic there.
Well, it's better to be excited than disappointed.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, take a look at it.
So, we're gonna review this, council, but we don't need to discuss anything at this time. You want us to read it right now?
No.
Okay.
It's only nine pages.
It's only nine pages, we can do it. All right, we're gonna move on to department reports. First, the town manager, Brian Gray.
Been a very productive month, and I think to recap, I know it was mentioned in an email, but just to capture that, we did partner heavily with crossroad engineers, and we did successfully submit for 1.2 million dollars worth of road repairs, 1.2 million dollars worth of grant funding to Endot for a community crossing grant, which has not been done for the town of Trafalgar since 2016. So, really hopeful, the grants will be awarded in December, so, you know, we're sitting around here waiting. So, as soon as I hear the news, I'll make the announcement, and just remain hopeful with us and support us, please. It's gonna be, make a major impact on the town. We continually try to improve failing infrastructure, so we're addressing things, and Mike, you may or may not notice, we were in your neck of the woods today, tearing out dilapidated drainage curbing, addressing these things, being proactive so they don't become bigger problems. So, happy to report that, things are going really well, a lot going on. I will skip to the most important part of this evening, and it is that we were inspected, we are on a two-year inspection schedule with IDIM, so they did come out and give us an inspection two weeks ago, and there were a few items that were noted. The good news is, in all of the listed items, they had already been cited previously in their last inspection and had not been addressed since then. The good, also good news is, I guess the good news is, every single item that was listed from IDIM and identified as a need, we answered with, we're already on it. So, if the piece of equipment was broken, it was already on order, we had a tracking number to prove it. If the skater system was not functioning, it was already in process, we already had the, you know, the work coming. So, if the equipment was broken, we were just waiting till Friday for that technician to show up. So, the very good news is, they didn't tell us anything that we didn't know. We thought we were on a three-year inspection schedule, but that's completely okay, because we know where we stand. We did follow up that inspection, we scheduled a training session with an IDIM representative who came to our lab and did a training session for our employees. So, they are now are aligned with IDIM's expectations of what they're expected to perform. The downside of that is, IDIM is tightening their requirements. Our staff are now required to test parts of the wastewater plant three times a day. So, this basically takes one person out of the equation. They're able to step away for an hour, hour and a half at a time to go work on something else, and they have to return back to the lab. And that's every, that's five days a week. So, there's new challenges that are coming with new restrictions with IDIM, but we're currently meeting them, it just puts additional strain on us. So, with this going into, there are some major items. One is a failed piece of equipment that has to be addressed, well, all of these have to be addressed, but this one is failing to the point where if we don't get this repaired in time for freezing weather, it's gonna become a major issue. And that's at the headworks. The screen that controls the headworks is not communicating with the augers. They're pumping out too much water. If we see freezing temperatures, it's gonna cause ice dams on that equipment. So, the cost of repair to that unit is $9,200, and that, that would be wastewater-related, and that is just to control the headworks. And that includes a replacement cabinet, the screen, this touchscreen, it's one vendor, it's one specialized contractor, there's no options for it. Jacob and I are working on the causes of this. This repair is repairing, but also repairing it to put it where it should have been. And like I said, Jacob and I have been working for a few months on pursuing these type of corrections. So, and we'll get into this in a little bit, but just to share with you this, this major news, like I said, the headworks repair is $9,200. The other is the water tower, the wastewater plant, the lift stations at the wastewater plant, monitoring devices, none of them are online. The plant was never, internet was never installed, they had no way to call out. We did install internet, and that's great, because that's IDIM requirement. We don't have the tools to communicate with the wifi to call out issues at the plant. So, the plant essentially without these is unmonitored. So, that was an IDIM requirement as well, that we said we're on it. The quote to bring us compliant with all IDIM items in addition to what I just mentioned is $32,440. And that will, happy to share this with you.
Did we come up and install that system?
This is, happy to give this to you. This is all devices, computers will be outdated, non-functioning as of October next year, so this replacement of the computers will make sure we're, we're still good. All new divide, well, not new devices, yeah, new devices, we don't have them. So, not, these aren't replacements, these are non-existent devices that are required by IDIM that should have already been there. Equipment and installation, and a one-year warranty as well, and all setup, setup costs, all automation, so they're gonna install this, warranty it, and then set us up to say, okay, here's the app on your phone, we'll get everything talking for you.
We've missed the window on contingency on that project, right? Or is that still available?
Still there.
Okay.
The huge plus side is, the contingency funds have not been utilized, they have been drawing interest since they've been in the bank.
Okay.
It's a huge blessing for us, and I think the, whatever the motion needs to be, with some guidance here, we, we must move forward with these repairs, and then we file for the contingency funds to reimburse these repairs.
Right.
And there are more than sufficient, last I recall, it was in the $200,000 to $300,000 range.
That's what I was thinking, so.
Of what we have.
Okay.
So, we would reimburse with the contingency funds, and like I said, fortunately, they have grown in interest over the years, so we're very fortunate to have them. So, happy to answer questions, and like I said, more than happy to share this with you as well.
How fast do we need to get it done? What, what's the timeframe that Indiana gives?
They will, they will be back. They, they will be back, is what we were told. So, you know, we're scheduled for a full-blown inspection in two years, but they will follow up. We actually had to send a report that says we have acknowledged the inspection findings, and we will move forward. If we do not agree to move forward with repairs, then it puts us in a situation.
We don't have it all through.
Yeah.
Can the, that plant's not that old. Can the computerization wait until spring? Or is that something that's?
No.
I wanna say, we've been this long without it, right? That's just my only.
We have been absolutely fortunate that we've been this long without it, because when, when the gentlemen leave work and go home, if something happens overnight, there is no notification till they pull back in that gate in the morning. We also had the recent situation with the water tower, that we were unable to monitor what was going on in our tower, and Prince's lakes, you know, they identified we had an issue, we couldn't, we couldn't identify our own issue, because we don't have any of this equipment communicating. So, you know, can it wait? Can they come back and say, you didn't fix it fast enough? So, I, I'm gonna say, no, it cannot wait. There are some additional requests I have to this vendor to say, can some of this help us automate some of the testing we're doing? The seven-day-a-week testing? Can some of this have automation that will relieve the staff from having to come in on Saturdays and Sundays or holidays? So, that's a hopeful, but regardless, these are minimum IDIM-required installations, and then the headworks, a timeline on that is ASAP, because as soon as we hit that freezing temperature and it starts to ice down, we're gonna have to monitor it by the hour.
Are you needing motions on this now, or do you say you have it again later? Where, where are we at?
Jacob, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, well, for one, it's, I don't wanna make moves like this on my own, I won't buy in, right? But I believe we're approaching beyond my authority to spend $30,000.
For the 30, we'll be at. The other one's probably right on the limit, but either way.
And they're se, and they're separate.
Correct, correct, yes.
I would take the first one, the $9,200 one, finalize, discuss, discussing that, if more discussion is needed, and then add a motion.
Move forward with that one.
Move forward to pay for the wastewater funds and seek reimbursement from.
Contingency funds.
The contingency funds for the wastewater treatment project.
I make a motion that we accept the $9,200 and we could.
Contingency funds.
Contingency funds.
So, just to clarify the motion, what, what is, what is the number? Is it 9,200?
Is 9,200 even? Yes.
Okay. Do we need 9,200 plus to get us to a not-to-exceed number? How about this, authorization for the town manager to spend monies not to exceed 9,500 for the procurement of a screen for the wastewater treatment plant, and to seek reimbursement of funds, contingency funds for the wastewater project?
Second.
So moved. You can't make a motion, right? So moved.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay. Motion made by Jason and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
The attorney can't make the motion.
Yeah.
If we're the dad, and we can just stay home.
Do we want, do we wanna move forward with the 32,000 motion, or do we wanna table it up for now?
My only question with 32,001 is if other folks are out there that.
Yeah, if that's not a proprietary issue, is there, can we get a couple more quotes for that?
It is a proprietary issue.
It is.
There is, there is one supplier, one vendor, one automation person. This plant, I don't know if it's like all plants, but there are very proprietary pieces of equipment that don't have other suppliers. There are other suppliers, but they might be based in Canada, or restricted, we can't make purchases, or hire, or use their vendors, so, you know, by using US vendors. So, this, this all is proprietary.
Okay.
Proprietary to what, what's already there. This is the person who installed what is already at the plant now, they are just building upon the framework they've installed and expanding on it. So, th, this person's been here, they already know everything, they're not, we're not starting over, because this is the one vendor, and these are the, this is the one brand of equipment. This is, there's only one touch panel that operates that specific headwork, so we are married to these specific proprietary brands because of what we chose to install at the plant.
And I mean, a question that maybe you can't answer, and it's really irrelevant, I'm just asking for my own benefit, was, in the, in the development of the upgrade to the plant, how was this missed? I mean, you weren't here, I, I'm just, have you heard? I mean, you have any insight to how?
Jacob, do you wanna touch on that? Okay. We're in process of.
I understand.
Researching that.
Okay, that's, right.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Well, it needs, I mean, again, I've said it before, people are, I mean, I'm people, by the way, paying a lot for water, wastewater and everything here in town. Part of that is because of these upgrades that we've made, we need to protect them, we need to make sure they work the way that we tell everyone that they are supposed to work. So, whatever, whatever that means, it needs to be, in my opinion, the system needs to be working the way that it's supposed to be working.
It's supposed to.
Before we're backing into another problem.
This'll make them more efficient, too, right? With the.
Well, again, it may eliminate some minimal overtime if the guys can do readings and monitoring from home, or if somebody can without driving in twice a weekend.
Right.
There's, there's other benefits, but the main one is, the system needs to work the way it was designed to work.
Yes, absolutely.
And offer the product that we told everyone we were buying with their money.
Yes.
So, currently it's not.
And to clarify, thi, this, this will absolutely help with efficiencies, but just to clarify, this isn't an expenditure with the hopes of efficiencies.
Requirement.
This is a just absolute bare-bones requirement. This is a just absolute bare-bones requirement.
Yeah.
There's additions too. And if you look at the page two of that, there's additional equipment that can improve our efficiencies, you know?
But they can be added on later once the system is correct. Like I want to, yeah.
Yeah. So just to be clear, I'm, I'm not trying to ask you guys for the sun, moon and star. We're going bare bones here and not going for the moon, right? Which I would love to, to provide that, but for right now, we just have to get compliant.
Okay.
So, and, and just for clarification for the record, this is the ol, the only source that we can get this equipment from.
Yes.
Okay.
It's specific branding, specific.
And then the reason why I ask is because the, the purchasing statute does contemplate a specialized project or, or unit or whatever we're purchasing under five twenty-two ten eight. This is code citation for that. Compatibility, compatibility of equipment, accessories, replacement parts, substantial consideration in the purchase and one source meets the equipment required. Sounds like we've checked.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, thi, this is not something we can call so-and-so, so-and-so. It's, wastewater is a very niche thing. It is, it's incredibly challenging.
Are we, are we cutting ourselves short by not putting option one and two into the mix? I mean, option one is the Excel reporter that reports on all data collection and reports live on the Scandius computer.
Uh, option one would be incredibly beneficial and incredibly helpful for us, not only for efficiencies, but reporting. You know, if, if a lot of the reporting required to IDM is a written form, that would capture it in electronic form where you just export it, send it. You don't have room for error. A hundred percent yes. We're selling our short, self-short. If we don't add that, I would love nothing more than to deliver that to the staff and to the town. It will protect us.
Now, the second one is the phone call.
So that one, to explain that one, Mike, that is, and what was the cost on that?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
So the, the thirty-some thousand incorporates texting. So if something fails, everyone gets a text.
You're looking at about forty-one thousand for the whole package.
But for the additional twenty-five hundred, you'll get a text and a phone call.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, we'll wake you up while you're asleep, possibly.
Well, it'd be better than, I'd rather get a phone call than have to shovel shit on one-thirty-five because something, the pump station on the corner there backed up.
Yes, completely your call. That's, that's.
We almost had that happen once already.
Yeah.
In the likelihood that we can get this back out of the contingency funds anyway, and the fact that it should have been done on the front end, I, I'm with you, Mike. I think if we've got the funds available to bridge the gap between now and a reimbursement from those funds, then I don't see there's any reason not to get it done right when we have the opportunity.
Do it once.
So you're in favor of going.
I would, personally, I would be in favor of just completing this system with these options that give, again, if we're going to do it anyway, it will include the efficiencies, the reporting stat, uh, software and everything else. So whatever, whatever that total is. And again, we've got, we've got any contingency, that money's already been earmarked, if you will, not spent, but it's been allocated and that's what it's for. So you've got thirty-two, sixty-one and twenty-five forty. Forty-one, one-twenty. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Anybody ever, any more discussion on that?
I agree with you completely. Let's do it right.
I agree with you.
All right, so.
I just think we're cutting ourselves short if we don't do it.
All right, and I'll go ahead and make a motion that we allow the town manager to move forward with and complete the purchase of the upgrading system through maximum automation for the amount of forty-one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and pursue the reimbursement through the contingency funds from the wastewater upgrade project.
Okay, motion made by Jason and seconded by Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed four to zero.
Thank you. I'll leave you with that. And, and I, like I said, I'm grateful. The town should be grateful and I'm, I'm happy to, to go further in depth on wastewater anytime you want us to talk about it. But I, I know the staff also are going to thank you for this because this is, we lose sleep at night over not having this in place, so, so we're all grateful. So thanks.
Where we have to hiring, you know, employee.
We are, we are still hiring. So if anyone knows of really good talent, we would love to have them come apply to join our team with the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Brian. Chief Roberts, take the floor.
Um, here I am giving you another update on the twenty-twenty-four Tahoe. I called a couple of weeks ago and spoke to a supervisor, manager, and that supervisor is now giving me a weekly call and updates on what they've done. Um, so as of eleven thirteen twenty-twenty-five, um, the seat belts that they were wrong twice or came in wrong twice are in, are in the vehicle. The back hose for the air conditioner has been installed. Um, they took it for a long test drive and they're, they cleared out all the codes and they are working on an outside agency to come in and calibrate everything. Um, I think the final step is to, will be the insurance company to obviously get them paid. So I should receive another update tomorrow. Hopefully I'll have it by the end of the year.
They should already have their money.
They said something, had to work, call the insurance company and work with a few things.
Okay. Yeah, because the insurance company already sent the money to, is it, uh, Huber? Or which one is it over there? Which one?
Bradley Chevrolet.
Bradley, yeah. They should have already sent that.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what they're talking about. She just said she had to work with the insurance company.
Unless it's, unless it's more than what they received from the insurance company. So.
Um, the twenty-twenty-five Ford Explorer, uh, has been paid for. All the paperwork has been signed. Everything is ready. However, it does have a recall and it's still sitting it on the lot, waiting on the recall to get done.
Do you know what the recall's for?
No, not exactly.
I, I sort of know what it's for because I just bought it from my class before. Um, and it's, it's kind of an electrical issue, uh, to an extent. I guess like the screen cuts off sometimes. I don't know. This one has screen on, but.
Yeah.
One I buy does. They said it just cuts off, doesn't turn back on, um, after you're backing up or it gets stuck on the backup camera. Uh, and they said, they told me it was a software update that was needed, so.
Well, um, they said Ford has, got everything in, they're rece, they're going to receive the part and they're going to deliver it to us sometime next week.
Yay.
So. Other than that, um, that's all I got. Hopefully I won't have to give you another update on the twenty, twenty-four Chevy Tahoe next month unless it say, hey, we've got it here. So, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Charles.
Okey-dokey. We're going to move to our town attorney. What you got for us?
Uh, this is something that I bring up usually towards the end of the year. Uh, it's conflict of interest disclosure. Really something you need to pay attention to for next year, any public works or purchasing that the town does, um, be cognizant of this rule. None of you have discussed anything with me regarding, uh, having any interest in any business that we've purchased goods or services from. I think we had maybe one thing, but I don't think Jason even voted on it or was present.
Oh, yeah, the drone.
But yeah, I don't think that would be required under this anyways. So, um, in any case, if there's ever a time that you know somebody or have any questions regarding some of the contracts the town enters into, particularly for public works projects, let me know. We'll talk about this and see if it meets the elements for disclosure. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Uh, no.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the floor for public reports from the public. This will last no longer than twenty minutes. If you have a comment, please come up and state your name and address and give us your comment.
Hi, I'm Penny Anderson from Morgantown. I just have a question. Was it eighteen sixteen that it wasn't Trafalgar, it was the state, wasn't it? Or that, I just don't want you guys to, I mean, people think, I had to take a class in Indiana history. That was one of the first things on the test and I will never forget that number. That's the eighteen sixteen, I believe, is the, um, establishment of the state. And because we were established in Morgantown eighteen thirty-one, but I think Trafalgar.
You know, when it was established, Trafalgar?
Oh, no. You tell me. You're in charge of that. I just don't want to make everybody, I mean, most people don't know it, but I never forget that class, but.
Well, Penny, you didn't know on it. I just Googled it.
Did you?
December eleventh eighteen sixteen is when state of Indiana become a state.
Eighteen sixteen was?
That's not what it sounds like.
It was a state. That's what I thought, but I thought, oh.
I didn't think about.
I don't know whether that matters to you guys, but I just thought.
Thank you, Penny. Anybody else? Come on down.
Hey, McQuarrie again, two hundred South Pleasant, Introfugger. Um, I thought I had come to a meeting earlier in the year where you actually had requested that all reports be in so that they could show up so we could kind of review the reports. So I noticed that this has been more than once, that, you know, Brian doesn't have his reports in. And so you guys are passing the paper down here and the public doesn't even know what is in his report to look at it. And the idea was for the town people to look at it. Even the ones that are at home could go in online and do that. So, um, that and the other thing is, um, when we did that upgrade for the sewage plant, um, I am surprised, like everyone else, that this was not caught, the problem that we had. As long as we had those people here, I would have thought that would have been found. So, but that's my problem.
Me too. Um, as far as the reports go, we had nothing on paper tonight that was, except for the invoice and the option for that purchase. So we had, all the reports we received this evening are available on the online links.
And I might just add to that, that, um, just kind of go there. The monthly report was not a requirement of my employment here. It is absolutely something I strive to complete, to provide to the council and the public monthly. However, with as many things going on, especially preserving our, uh, infrastructure and wastewater plant, it's prioritization of sitting down for four or five hours and drafting a report or making sure we're prepared with quotes to bring to the council for approval to, to protect the public. So when I have to weigh my options, it's something I'd love to provide to you, but it's not a requirement. It's nice to have and I'd love to do it if I have the time. But, um, it comes to a priority call. So that's why not every month I'm able to produce that. Time to just add that.
Truthfully, just, just to put out there, what my hope with that is, is the, the report itself is usually pretty quick to go through. I like to have an opportunity to go through the statements just because there's a lot, like the bank, the banking information, there's a lot more to it than that. But usually the, you know, the police report, the town manager report, it's usually just a page or two, so we can glance through that while we're here. But I like to have the opportunity to look through the things that, you know, like the nine-page memo that we need to look at so that you guys don't have to sit here and watch me read. I just like to look at that ahead of time.
I need that you've requested all, you know, everyone to have their reports in. And I think it's good that we have a report so that people can see what's, what's going on. And if they, you know, dial in from home, then they know what everybody is talking about, so.
And Pam, I think Brian has started, because I think I saw, uh, something just here the other day. It was on Facebook where he put pretty, a pretty lengthy, um, thing out there on Facebook with what he had been working on. So.
Description of everything that's been going on.
So, yeah, so I mean, that's.
Thank you. If I know Pam's mentioned, you know, nine-one Facebooks, right? So I respect that. And for me, that's a just, that's a little bit, that's a much shorter time constraint for me. It's a challenge for me to do it because it pushes me outside my comfort zone. But someone asked me, what do you do? What do you do? What's a town manager even do? So for me, that's just a very high level. That's kind of the, the not ugly side of what I'm doing every day, every minute of every day. That's the, that's the heavy hitters for the week. So I'm going to try to continue to do that. I, I would love to continue to do that and I hope I can weekly. So thanks for recognizing that. But yeah, like I said, that's just, that's an update. That's not intended for the council. That's intended for the public. And by all means, every month, I'd love to give you a report. But when it comes time for a priority call, I'm sure you'd rather me be out there than in here, so.
Here, and I'll, I'll add a little tidbit real quick. Obviously, whether you, whether you want to hear it or not is irrelevant. But, um, being the longest-serving member of this council, twelve years nearly, um, what I can tell you is I luckily gave up a long time ago in pleasing everyone. But at the same time, what I'll tell you is the efficiency that's going on in the town now, overseeing development, managing employees, catching problems that none of us knew were existing, contrary to everyone's belief. And Jacob, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The elected officials on this table are not here to manage the day-to-day operations of the town and be the employee supervisors and the things that people expect that we are doing. We are here to put people in place to manage the systems of the town and see that it happens appropriately. We are finally doing that for the first time since I've lived in this town, to be honest with you. So eight years on the council before this council came in, we're pretty ineffective and I was part of it. Sometimes it's hard to work with the help you got. This is happening. Brian's doing a great job. His employees are doing a great job. Charles is doing a great job. And by the way, let's not forget that they're still doing an outstanding job with extremely limited staff. They've added no additional personnel for however long and they're still getting it done. So I will thank you publicly, all of you town employees for what you're doing. And, and again, you're not going to get a hundred percent, but you're doing far better than we were doing as a council doing our own for however long we tried it. So thank you.
Thank y'all.
I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my name's David Moore. I live here in Trafalgar. Uh, I wasn't trying to be rude by standing over there, but if I'd sat back down, I might not have been able to get back up. I just kind of took a pinch up because I was already up. I, just real quick right here, you Google Talister Fugger. It was plat, just the short of it, planted in eighteen fifty. It was officially reincorporated in nineteen forty-six. Uh, the name was moved to a new location in eighteen sixty-eight. And, uh, and then said town grew together in eighteen seventy. Ain't none of them got that date of eighteen sixteen on here. I mean, just, that's for what, FYI. That's all.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll follow up on some of the dates and get some confirmation. To be honest with you, I'm more concerned at this very moment with my OCD, uh, that if we could move that camera up about an inch. Then, but yeah, we'll, we'll look at and try to confirm these dates just to see, because I found the same thing. There was an eighteen thirty-six Town of Liberty. There's, yeah. Right. But I mean, we'll, we'll get it right. But I do, that's, 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 I do want it to be accurate. I agree. But we'll get there. We'll figure that out.
I actually looked that up a long time ago for whatever reason. And when you've done that picture, I don't think it even sounded right. And you said, said it outside.
All right, we have any more public comment?
Thomas Barclay Commonwealth Engineers. Uh, I got engineer Megan Bentozy with me, uh, as well. If you recall, we stopped by in August at, at that Friday morning meeting, um, to talk about a lot of the stuff you guys talked about tonight. Um, and we dropped off a general services agreement, um, which is just our standard boilerplate contract. Task order, uh, which is basically says it's a not-to-exceed to assist the town on a lot of these, um, these issues. So, you know, we're here. We can talk about that now. We'll talk about that after the, the council meeting. Um, but also part of that was, um, you know, seeking, um, more of a legal opinion on how to, to, to handle the, the prior, um, engineering firm to come up with a solution to a lot of these questions that you guys are asking tonight, um, because they're not very forthcoming with that information. Um, we tried to, from a professional, uh, side, have a courtesy to reach out to them, um, you know, firm to firm, and they've chosen to ignore that. So there might be another, uh, more legal route that needs to be explored, um, in order to get the, the files and the documents that are, you guys paid for, um, that they hold on to. So, um. What's that?
What Thomas is alluding to is they can't do anything without information. And they have requested, we have requested. We have requested for our previous engineering firm to provide us with what they have. Our information that we have paid for that they hold. They will not transfer that information to Commonwealth to move forward with anything. They're currently flying blind. They, they would have to essentially start over. So, go ahead, go ahead.
So to, to, to kind of just, to break this down into how we work as a company, when we do these sorts of projects, we, we go through what we call a preliminary engineering report. It's a, you know, a six to nine-month process where we study everything. We give you a, a recommendation on multiple projects. Um, you guys pick one. So let's say you pick up, wait, upgrade to your wastewater treatment plant. That document is available at town hall. We give you a digital copy of it. Um, and if you ever need to look up something, it's probably in Brian's office or it's sitting in here. Somebody knows where to find it. Should be. Um, so that, that's what we need because that allows us to see from an engineering point, we can start looking at how they designed the project, how they. we can start looking at how they designed the project, how they, um, evaluated the project. Um, and there's a lot of other documents in there, too. It's not just a preliminary engineering report. Once you go through the whole, you know, the year to design the project, um, you know, the, the drawings and all that stuff that, that Megan, that world that she lives in, we need to see those, 'cause then that gives us a, from an engineering world, an understanding of how they approached the issues at the treatment plant, and then we can kind of see, okay, here's what they said they were gonna do, here's what happened. Was it an engineering flaw? Was it a construction flaw? Um, did the contractor just not follow the, the, the design that the engineer laid out? Um, you know, kind of balance all those things together and kind of see where, where it went, um, wrong. And then also, you know, a lot of this comes down to timing, too. You know, when did they claim that the project was substantially completed? Was that, you know, when was that finalized? Are you guys still in warranty period? Can you go back on a lot of this stuff and, and seek for changes or rest? Two, there's a lot of stuff that, that can go on, so, more than that, we just, we, you know, from, from us to, to assist the town in the best way possible, um, you know, we need that information from your prior engineering firm, sooner rather than later. Because a, a delay tactic for them, too, is, if you guys still are in your warranty period, the longer you wait, the closer your warranty period comes to an end, and when your warranty period's over, then it's kind of...
We've already got things they've done wrong that they don't want to fix, so...
Yes, and, 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 and that is true, and, and then this all, this all works together to kind of come up with a, a, a holistic view of, of how things ended up, and how can we go fix it? And what is, what are they still relying, were they still on the hook for what is kind of, uh, sorry? It, it is what it is, and kind of balance those things out so the town can make the best decision possible.
So... Guys, should we...
A lot of that information you're asking about?
Yes.
It'd be in Lee's office, if somebody had to throw it away. Every paper you ever got, he kept.
That's the past.
I'd just ask, I would just, I would just ask Brian and Jake if you keep us posted on what we, what you need from us to move forward to get this remedied as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
And I think what, what Thomas is alluding to is, it's gonna be on behalf of the town to legally pursue, forcing them to hand over our information.
Right.
That's gonna come at a cost to us. So, I think it's for awareness, that, that's where we're at. We're trying to move forward. We know we have things on our heels. I know we talked about the gratis project recently. It's very close to becoming, coming to reality. You know, once that happens, we have to move quickly. That's why we pulled them in here to research that, that project specifically. If it gets to be go-time, we don't have any information to base it off of. We're flying blind. Their costs are gonna be in addition, too, because now they have to go find things that we have record of, that we have no access to, because prior to me being here, we did not hold our records. They were held externally because we had no internal management, so...
The state of Indiana had those?
Have researched the online information.
It, it'd be highly unusual if they didn't have electronic copies of it, um, especially being that the project was designed in twenty twenty, you know, fifty years. I mean, it happened after two thousand and five. If proper, if proper protocols. It would be highly unusual. They, 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 you know, before they sold, they were a very, very respectable company, so I, I would be shocked. And that might be, too, that, you know, that company will no longer exist. They're now sold to a, a larger national firm, so, you know, yeah.
Well, regardless, we need the paper.
I agree.
No, I mean, for what it's worth, I would just say, I mean, we retain their services for a reason. We need that information, so... I mean, keep us posted on excessive costs, obviously, but in the meantime, it needs to be done. We, we have to get it handled.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Tom, Mike. When they start about two thousand and five, two thousand and fifteen, that is the past. You don't think they're smart, Elvis, about it.
I understand that, David.
Well, that's what I was saying. That was in the past.
My point was being that a lot of that stuff was already gone before we walked in.
You don't know, it's gone, 'cause nobody ever looked for it.
Okay, do we have any other public comment? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting at six fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Jason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.